Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the District Department of Transportation's DBE Goal Setting Methodology Public Hearing. I am Nana Bailey-Thomas, the Chief Transportation Equity and Inclusion Officer, and on behalf of the Acting Director Everett Lott, I'd like to thank you all for attending and welcome you. I want to explain briefly the purpose of today's public hearing. Today's public hearing is to allow for the District Department of Transportation to obtain feedback regarding our DBE methodology. As many of you know, the purpose of this hearing is to obtain public feedback and to help establish the anticipated amount of DBE participation regarding federal highway-funded projects. The United States Department of Transportation Federal Regulations 49 CFR Part 26.45 requires the District Department of Transportation to review its federal DBE goal every three years and to adjust the goal if necessary. During the hearing, you will hear from the presenter, who will share DDOT's process as to how we develop the goal, and also the proposed DBE goal for fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2024. The entire report will be available on DDOT's website for public comment. At the end of this public hearing, information will be provided to you as to how you can provide additional feedback and comments to the report. I now would like to give you just some brief tips on how to navigate through the platform. So, again, welcome. This is an open meeting as required by DC Code 2-578. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be made available to the public. The video file, both audio and video, will be shared on DDOT's website and DDOT's YouTube channel within 24 hours after this meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on DDOT's Facebook page as well. If you do not wish to have your voice recorded, please do not ask to speak. You may enter questions or comments in the Q&amp;A, which we will review in the next few slides. If you need technical support during this meeting, please call (202) 309-3491. So just some brief tips on using the WebEx platform. Audio and muting: Everyone is on mute. You cannot unmute yourself. We can unmute you during the Q&amp;A and comment period. This helps ensure the meeting runs smoothly, and there will be no auditory disruptions during the presentation. To request to speak, you will need to use the raise hand feature, which we will cover shortly. Your video camera is off by default, and you will not be able to share your video. To reduce the bandwidth of the meeting, only the DBE team will be sharing video to improve the overall meeting quality for all participants. Using WebEx ASL interpretation, click and drag the slider bar to adjust the size of the stage window. Close any open panels, participants chatter Q&amp;A, to maximize your space. If you have a question during the presentation, send it via the Q&amp;A feature. Note, the Q&amp;A feature will be open by default when you join this meeting. To send a question, click the three-dot icon in the bottom right side of the WebEx window and select Q&amp;A. A new panel or window will appear in the Ask field. Select All Panelists. Click the text box to type your question, and press the Enter key to send it. If you join via browser or mobile app, click the question mark icon to access the Q&amp;A. Calling users will not be able to access the Q&amp;A. If you dial in by phone, dial *3 to use the raise hand function. This indicates to the DBE team that you would like to speak and ask a question. If you have a question or comment that you would like to speak up about, again, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. This indicates to the DBE team that you would like to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click Participants on the bottom right of the WebEx window. A new panel will appear near the bottom panel window, and there will be a small hand icon. Click the icon to raise your hand. Next slide, please. And so, federal regulations require DBE goal setting. Why must the District Department of Transportation comply with the federal regulations regarding the disadvantaged business enterprise program? The District Department of Transportation is a recipient of federal funds from the Federal Highway Administration. As a result, DDOT must set an overall DBE participation goal for DDOT's federal-funded projects. The applicable federal regulations are 49 CFR Sections 26.3, Sections 26.45, and 26.51. But before we go any further, I would like to make a brief introduction. Andrea Jackson, who is the DBE Team Deputy Compliance Officer, will be monitoring the Q&amp;A for your questions. And today's presenter is Damian Mayo, who is our federal compliance, federal and local compliance EO officer. So I am going to turn this presentation over to Damian. We ask for your honest feedback, and look forward to seeing you soon. Bye-bye.
Good morning, Nana, and thank you for that wonderful introduction. And thank you for everyone in attendance for this exciting briefing on our DBE goal setting methodology. Once again, I would like to thank everyone who is in attendance, and we look forward to your feedback. So during my presentation, I will be discussing or briefing how we came about our proposed fiscal year 2022 through 2024 DDOT DBE goal. Just to cover some definitions, Race/Gender Conscious Goal means a goal that is focused specifically on assisting only DBEs, including women. Race/Gender Neutral Goal means DBE participation that is obtained when a DBE wins a prime contract through competitive procurement, or when a prime contractor subcontracts with a DBE without a goal or exceeds the goal. With those two definitions in mind, our overall DBE goal is projected to be 21.84%, with a Race/Gender Neutral goal projected at 1.57%, and a Race/Gender Conscious goal projected Here is a basic outline of the federal DBE goal-setting process, steps that we took to determine our goals. Step one was to determine relative availability of DBE contractors. Step two was to determine if any adjustments to the base number are needed. And step three was to determine Race/Gender Neutral Goals and Race/Gender Conscious Goals. And moving forward will be additional details pertaining to each one of these steps. So step one: Determine Relative Availability of DBE Contractors. First, we had to identify our local market area. So the local area market for DDOT includes Washington DC metropolitan area, also referred to as the metro area. The metro area is defined by the U.S. Census Bureau Metropolitan Statistical Area as Washington, Arlington, Alexandria, or DC, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia. This area includes the District of Columbia, Virginia Cities of Alexandria, Fairfax, Falls Church, Fredericksburg, and Manassas Farc City, the Virginia Counties of Arlington, Clark, Fairfax, Fallquere, Loudoun, Prince William, Spotsylvania, Stafford, and Warren, the Maryland Counties of Calvert, Charles, Montgomery, Prince George's, and Frederick, and West Virginia County of Jefferson. For step 1B, we reviewed the DBE directories to determine the relative availability within the local market areas using the DBE directories associated with each individual entity, such as MDOT, the Virginia Small Business Supplier Development, West Virginia DOT, Washington DC Small and Local Business Development, Veterans Affairs Office of Small and Disadvantaged Business, and the DDOT WAMADA Directory. All links are included here to each one of the directories that was used. For step 1C, we analyzed past participation by DBE firms from contract data for the periods of fiscal year 2018 through 2020. And this chart here summarizes our historical contractual data for those three-year periods. And this just outlines our historical contracting data as it pertains to the DBE contracting For step 1D, we determined where DDOT spent contract dollars during the three-year period of fiscal years 2018 through 2020 by NACE code designations. This is a sample table of the population that we included in our sample. Step 1D was to determine where DDOT spent contract dollars during the three years. Here, showing our population sample. For step 1E, we analyzed forecasted spend for the next three years to determine the anticipated work that DBE firms are expected to perform based on NACE codes and calculate the weighted base figures. Here, this table represents the weighted DBE availability for each NACE code. Step 2: Adjustment to the Step 1 Base Figure. For step 2A, we analyzed the fiscal years 2018 through 2020 contract data to determine the median past participation, the median for the three-year contract period. So for the three years of fiscal '18, 2019, and 2020, we took the median of these three years for our DBE percentage. Step 2B: We made the appropriate calculations using the weighted base figure from step 1 and the median past participation to determine the triennial DBE goal. So our weighted base figure was projected or estimated to be 19.93%. We then added the median past participation of 23.76% to give us 43.69, which was then divided by 2, which gave us the projected goal of 21.84%. Based upon the calculation above, the overall adjusted three-year goal for the fiscal years 2022 through 2024 is 21.84%. Weighted base figure calculation. The calculation for the adjustment is as follows. Identify the median past performance, which is 23.76. The median figure is then added to the weighted base figure and divided by 2 to determine the adjusted Step 2 goal, as outlined below. Median past participation, 23.76%, plus a weighted Step 1 base figure of 19.93%, which gave us a sum of 43.69% divided by 2, which equals 2184. Step 3A: We analyzed 2024 contract data to determine the DBE participation in excess of the set goal during the corresponding fiscal year to determine the Race Neutral Goal. DBE participation in excess of goals for fiscal year 2018 through 2020 for Race Neutral was established as 1.57%, which is based, which the historical median is 1.57%, as shown here in the chart. Step 3B: We made the appropriate calculation to determine the Race Conscious Goal. Our median past participation in excess of the DBE goal, which is 1.57%, our overall DBE goal was projected at 21.84%. Our Race Neutral Goal is projected at 1.57%, and our Race Conscious Goal is 201, excuse But finally, for the fiscal year 2022 through 2024 DBE goal, the overall goal, which was the method was outlined in the previous slides, has been projected at 21.84%. Our Race Conscious Goal is projected at 20.27, and the Race/Gender Neutral Goal is 1.57%. And just to recap on some definitions, the Race/Gender Conscious Goal means a goal that is focused specifically on assisting only DBEs, including women-owned DBEs. Race/Gender Neutral Goal means DBE participation that is obtained when a DBE wins a prime contract through competitive procurement, or DBE participation that is obtained when a prime contractor subcontracts to a DBE without a goal or above the goal. For comments, the following Title VI Public Engagement questionnaire will be made available. And as a recipient of federal assistance, DDOT must ensure that all of its programs, activities, and public meetings are conducted in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This act ensures nondiscrimination based on race, color, or national origin. The Title VI Public Meeting Participant questionnaire is used to help DDOT ensure that we are informing the public and conducting our meetings in a nondiscriminatory manner and in compliance with Title VI. Project comments and/or concerns may also be submitted through this form. We appreciate anyone who is willing to complete the form. Thank you for your participation, and please note, the form can be accessed via this QR scan code in the top right corner. And now it's time for our questions. And I would like to turn it back over to Ms. Nana Bailey, and thank you all for your participation.
Thank you, Damian, for that presentation. At this juncture, we are going to open up any questions or comments you may have. We will ask that you put that information into the Q&amp;A section, and so we will allot whatever amount of time necessary to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. And Andrea, from my view, I don't see any questions in the chat. I'm not sure if we have any raised hands.
I don't see any so far.
Thank you.
There is one question that popped up in Q&amp;A, and it is, when is there ongoing, when is there going to be a disparity study done? And, Nana, I can answer that question. Good morning. The District of Columbia has authorized a disparity study to be completed, and that study is under the auspices of the Department of Small and Local Business Development, DSLBD. So that process is ongoing. I am not sure as to when the process will be completed, but we can get that information to you. Okay, here's a question. Are they going to look at contractors from DOT? So the disparity study implemented has, does not, is not, does not have DBE goals on it. It is a study that has been authorized by the District of Columbia, the mayor. So it is considered local funding, which typically with local funding, it was put out to the public for anyone to respond to, but not specifically DOT contractors. So here's a question. When will DOT do a DBE disparity study? And that question is for you, Nana.
So it's rather interesting, because this question came up during our DBE networking event. As to when we were going to do a disparity study regarding federal funds, we do know that this has been a concern raised by some business owners and some constituents, and so we do not have a timeframe, a definite timeframe when that will occur. That is something we will look into, but we do know that it is a concern that we need
So I am not seeing additional questions at this point, and I do not see any raised
I can answer, I can answer this one. This is from Mr. Swales, who sent me an email after the DBE networking event. Yes, I received your email. I did not forget about you, and we'll have to schedule some time on the calendar, but I have been completely swamped. So we will definitely schedule some time to talk. And then there's a follow-up question, Andrea.
It is, but I'm having problems seeing it on my end. I can see there's a question.
Okay, I can answer this. I guess I can moderate this one. Is there any consideration of DBE and local contribution when feds participate? And I'm sorry, Mr. Montague, I don't know if there is a way for you to maybe clarify I must, I'm, are you, are you asking, is there a small business or local business participation regarding federal funds? Thank you. And at this time, there is not a local requirement required with federal funds. There may be hiring practices that are on certain projects, such as the South Capitol Street Bridge Project, or the Frederick Douglass Bridge Project, where there were some local hiring preferences that were included. But at this juncture, with regards to federal funds, no, there's no requirement for local or small businesses.
He said yes. The question is, the study that DC is doing, I can send someone the flyer if you do not have it.
I believe we received that information from DSLBD.
Yes, and it was actually put out into the public, and it was on OCP's website as It was sent out to DBE, because I have not, oh, was it sent out to DBEs, because I have not received it? No, that, that information was not sent out to DBEs, because it was not part of the DBE process in terms of contracting opportunities, but I can get that information to you if you'd like it. There's another question. I would send it out to DBEs because they do business in the DBE, in the DC market. We can send it out to DBE firms if you're interested. I believe that procurement may have already been awarded. I can check with the Department of Small and Local Business, but you can also check with the Department of Small and Local Businesses as well.
Andrea, I have a question. Are those questions coming to you directly or are they going in the overall Q and A?
There, there, there are some that's coming to me directly. And then there's some coming to the overall Q and A.
Okay, thank you.
But I wanted to make sure everybody, you know, had the response. Not seeing any other questions. The comment is that the study is being conducted now and focus groups are, are being included and the DBEs need to participate. I believe that the, that the, the DC government is using firms that are in their CBE database and any vendor that is registered with the district. Now, if you're subcontractor, you're, you may or may not be registered with the district. You may be registered with whomever you are contracted with. But if you're a DBE firm, I always encourage DBE firms to register as a vendor directly with the district so that you can get any information that comes out. The comment is DDOT is part of the district. That is accurate. However, all vendors must register with the Office of Contracting and Procurement in order to receive information. Now, when there's information concerning DBE firms, that information comes from DDOT. But any procurement through the District of Columbia comes through the Office of Contracting and Procurement. So I would still encourage you to register with OCP as a vendor so that when this information comes out, especially procurements that have local funding attached, that you will have that information. If you do not want to speak, you still can raise your hand to ask a question. I don't see any raised hands. If you'd like to be unmuted to speak verbally, you can raise your hands, my apologies. I don't see additional questions. Okay, we do have a raised hand. Mr. Alfred Swales is raising his hand.
I'm unmuted. Lord have mercy, Jesus Christ. All that typing, I've got a typing disease, isn't that crazy? Okay, the reason why I'm raising my hand is I understand exactly what you're saying, Mrs. Jackson. I think you, you hear it. But we're not talking about the procurement of a disparity study. We're talking about this, we're talking about the participating, participating in the disparity study. And so they have a flyer out now where they want people to actually join the focus group that they are having on the 7th, 8th, 7th, 8th and 9th. And all district contractors are able to participate, regardless of whether you're DBE, CBE, or no CBE or EBEs at all. Everybody can participate in this study. As far as telling what their experiences are with doing business in the District of Columbia. That's what it's about. And so if you haven't received the flyer, I can send the flyer to you so you can actually send it out to the people in your network that are contracted, DBE, not DBEs, everybody. So that's, that's what I was trying to say. So it's not about finding out about how we bid on the disparity study contract. And it's actually, DMC is actually, actually running. They've already hired a consultant, BBC, Ateira and another law firm. So they're already getting started on the 7th, but they're allowed to actually do the study. And so that's what I was talking about if you just sent, if I, if you need the flyer, if they didn't send it to you, I would, would be more than happy if you put your address in the chat. I will definitely send you that flyer so you can send out to the people in your network, whether they're DBEs or not DBEs.
Mr. Swales?
Yes.
Hi, this is Nana Bailey Thomas. Since I owe you a reply, can you send the flyer to me and I will make sure it gets out to the network?
Please.
Then you already have my, you already have my information. So if you can just send that to me and I will send you a reply.
Okay, I think I have it.
You got it. You sent me an email.
Okay, all right. It's basically your first name. I, I got it. I'll send it to you.
You got it.
I'll send it to you. I got it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
While I'm on here, the goal is 27%. This year is going to be for 2021, 22. Did I see 27%?
Uh, that question would be directed at Damon. You may need to go back in your slide presentation to clarify.
Absolutely. So was the question regarding the projected 2022?
So you said, the overall goal for DBE goal is 21.84. For contractors who basically, the goal for neutral goal is 1.57. That's within the goal period. And contractors who do at least their goal or do not have a goal and overachieve their goal is 20.27. Is that correct? Or should I start over from the beginning? The overall goal is 21.84, correct?
Correct. That is the overall DBE goal.
And the neutral goal is the goal in which contractors actually sub out and have a goal tool. Is that correct? A contractor that has a goal.
Okay, so just to go over some of the, the basic definitions here, just to provide a framework for the race, gender, neutral goal of 1.57%. That is going to be applied to, towards, or this applies towards DBE participation that is obtained when a DBE wins a prime contract through competitive procurement or DBE participation that is obtained when a prime contract or subcontract to a DBE without a goal or above the goal. So that's, it's correct. The 1.57 is.
I got that.
To go to the race, gender, neutral goal.
Just to understand, I'm a DBE. If I win a contract, my goal on that contract, since I'm a DBE, is 1.57.
This is Andrea. Maybe I can bring some clarity to your question. The goal that you're seeing is an overall agency goal that we are proposing to Federal Highway. So we're proposing, our current agency goal is 22.19%, but we're proposing a goal of 21.84% based on our past performance. Now, that doesn't mean that your goal will automatically be set at the 21.84% or the 20.27%. The way goals are set within DDOT is we set goals on a contract by contract basis. So we look at the scope of work and then we compare that with the DBE relative availability and we set the goal. So one contract has a 20% goal, another contract may have a 30% goal. So this goal that you're looking at is the goal that DDOT would need to achieve overall for DBE participation as an agency.
Okay, but then what we did there, then we also, we drilled down a little bit more. So we're seeing for, for race and gender neutral goals, those would be goals where either DBE actually got the contract as a prime or the prime who got a contract overachieved his goal. Is, is that correct? And that, and that would be 1.57. That's the only, that's the goal.
That is correct. If the contractor, if the prime contractor overachieves the contract based on their goal, then that is considered your race, gender, neutral. That's correct.
Okay, and then the race and gender conscious is 20.27. That's, that's pretty, that's pretty, I think that's pretty high upon the ranking as far as states and other municipalities, I believe. 21.84 is really high. I think Maryland is like 27. You know, West Virginia is like 3%. That's their overall goal. So that is pretty decent. I think that's a pretty decent overall goal considering the size of DC and, you know, the range in which we live in, also in Maryland and Virginia, which also has a DBE program to.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And please ensure to include your comments in the, in the comment review section so that we can, you know, incorporate the comments in a formal manner when we submit all of this information to FHWA for further review. So that way we can, and not just yourself, but the entire audience. You know, if you have any feedback or comment that is kind of geared toward the goal, please include that feedback and we greatly appreciate that. And this helps, that helps us just not establishing this goal, but just moving forward in the process and, and providing feedback to the DBE community and the community overall as well. So thank you for your feedback and please keep it coming. This greatly helps us to, you know, provide a great service to the community.
And Damian, can you go back to that comment slot so that the audience will be reminded of how they can submit written comments via DDOT's website?
Sure. So there, you can use the Q and R scan code here. And additional, there's an additional link as well. A link here at, for DDOT and then an email as well that comments can be submitted to.
And again, you have until June of 25th to submit written comments to DDOT regarding the study. The study is available on DDOT's website at HTTPS slash, slash, d dot D C dot gov. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised or questions. We, we have time for more questions. If anyone would like to raise your hand, we can unmute you. And if you would like to submit a question, please do so in the Q and A section. Mr. Swales, is your hand raised again or you just didn't put it down from the last question?
Yes, it's up again. Hey, I just wanted to let y'all know. I just received one of those phony letters, I don't know, from another place that says that your business DBE line changed after David A. Poole letter. Jeff Moran, director. Amal Moutriyan is the director.
He's the former director, so that needs to be changed.
Well, I don't, I'm not certified for DDOT. I'm certified through Maguara. So it's one of those phony letters that I get from other, from people trying to get into your, what's their name? You'll probably get a lot of, one of those phony letters that somebody, somehow they have, what is it called? Got into your database.
Like a phishing letter?
Yeah. Yeah, they got into your database. I just got it. So it was funny that I'm on, it's from NCA approval letter. I'm not open to that. In fact, I'm going to delete it.
Mr. Swales, can you forward that to me and I'll let our, our IT office know?
Will do.
Thank you.
And just a reminder for our callers who are on a PC, mobile app or iOS app or their phone, you can raise your, your hand by dialing star three and that will allow you to participate in the Q and A section as well. and that will allow you to participate in the Q and A, uh, section as well.
We have a question, um, from, um, caller number 240440, Molly.
I have a general question. I was trying to, uh, my name is Rupesh Ganle, by the way. Uh, I work for Somat Engineering and we're a small business firm too. Uh, I have a general question. I, I clicked on the link for the, uh, like, you know, the, uh, virtual meeting. For some reason, uh, it's, it's not working for me. I'm not sure why. Is there a link, separate link that you guys provided?
We do have an alternate link and, um, if you email the hires, she can send you that link.
Okay, I will.
Our customer service office have the link. Um, did, did you still want to, um, get in on the meeting?
Yes, I would like to get in the meeting, you know.
Okay. Um.
Can we post it in the chat?
Yeah, I can post that.
That wouldn't do anything for me, I think, I'm on the mobile phone.
There still should be a chat feature, I'm sorry, or a Q and A feature on your phone.
I, I press star three for, uh, you know, for me to let in to talk, you know.
Quick, sorry guys, this is Molly Burns, D dot IT. Um, he has called in directly, so he is trying to get into the meeting. So the link is R E B R A N D period L Y slash D B E goal, G O A L, public hearing dash, May 27th. That is the URL to join.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Um, let's see, am I seeing another hand raised? This is the same individual who had his hand raised. Again, if you're calling in, you can raise your hand by hitting, you said Damian star.
Yes, that is correct. Um, if you are, are on a, an Android mobile, excuse me, mobile device or PC mobile device, iOS device, you may, uh, depress star three and that will allow you to join the Q and A session from your device.
So I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. And there are no questions in the Q and A section. Um, Damian, can you go back to the slide with the, uh, the QR code? Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Per our Title VI, um, we would like to get your feedback on this hearing. Our public involvement questionnaire is shown on the screen. In order to participate in the questionnaire, you can hold your cell phone over the QR code. A link would pop up and you can just click the link. It will take you directly to the questionnaire. It is a very short, um, questionnaire. So we ask that you please complete this and submit it and we can get your feedback recorded and your participation recorded in this meeting. I am not seeing additional hands raised nor questions in the Q and A section. Okay, we do have a hand raised, Molly. The caller is six, okay, there it is. Um, go ahead, call over to the.
Yes, I'm David Brooks. Uh, I work for Carolyn Hardy with Industrial Sales in Memphis. And, uh, my question was on reciprocity from, uh, other municipalities. Can, uh, do you accept reciprocity? Does DC accept reciprocity from other cities?
So the District of Columbia, um, for, um, interstate certification, we use the, you, we use the interstate certification process. So if you are currently certified in your home state, you may submit your application to DDOT as well. Use that same application, your original application with all attachments and you can submit that to DDOT, um, to be considered for interstate certification. We do have, okay, our certification process is online. So make sure you go to d dot dot D C dot gov. In the search bar, you can add DVE and the page will pop up and you can, it'll give you instructions on how to submit your application via our portal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you've already asked your question, um, you, um, put your hand down so we can see if we have new questions coming in.
How do I, I'm on my phone, it wouldn't work on my, what do I press to disconnect the, the star three again?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Molly again. I just wanted to repeat the link in case it was not heard correctly. Um, if you're still trying to get into the meeting here, it is R E B R A N D period L Y forward slash D B E goal, public hearing dash, May 27th. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing additional hands raised. And there are no questions in the Q and A section.
Uh, this is Rupesh again. The link for some reason does not work. The L Y slash D B E goal, public hearing, dash, May 27th, does not work. And I tried three different browsers. It's still, I, I don't know, it's, the, the site cannot be reached.
Um, Damian, can you go back to the slide, get our contact information on it?
Absolutely.
If you send me an email, I'm Andrea Jackson, Andrea dot Jackson at D C dot gov. If you send me an email, I can send that link to you.
So can you, can you spell your name for me, please?
It's A N D R E A dot J A C K S N.
Got it, I'm just, uh, sending a quick email.
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll send that to you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised and there are no questions in the Q and A section. Again, if you are calling from a mobile device, you can press star three to ask a question. Okay, Nana, I'm not seeing any other questions or hands raised.
Thank you. Well, if there are no additional, um, questions or comments, um, again, we just encourage all of you. Damian, can we go back to the slide where we are requesting, uh, public feedback on the report?
Yes.
No, go forward one. Right there, thank you. So again, um, we are asking for public comments until Friday, June 25th, 2021. And if you have any comments that you would like included, um, in the report and the feedback that we give to FHWA, those can be sent to DDOT, so D D O T dot D B E at D C dot gov. And if there are no additional, um, comments or questions, I definitely would like to thank everyone who attended today's public hearing. I also would like to give a special thank you to Andrea Jackson, our Deputy Compliance Officer, and Damian Mayo, our EDO, Compliance Officer and Presenter, as well as Troy Parham, who's a member of the team as well. And I'd also like to thank Molly Burns, who was our tech support. And also, I would like to thank our interpreters. We appreciate your services and thank you so much. And so if there's nothing additional, this will conclude our public hearing. Thank you, everyone, and stay safe.